Thank you.
Leah and Lisa, thank you for your update. Did you have any more that you wanted to speak to before it's opened up to board members to ask any questions they have?
I don't think so. We're ready for questions. Am I correct, Lisa?
We're ready for questions.
Great. Thank you. Julie, I see that you are off mute, so.
Yeah, I just have two, I have two questions and one comment. One is, do you know the timing for when you will open up registration and for the preschool classes? Or is it already open? Or just what's an update on that part?
Yep. So our preschool classes actually opened in February, and they always remain open. And so really, what we're hoping to be able to do is actually go off of our current registrants and really just make the process a little bit easier. We might have a few classes that we'll need to tweak here and there, but we're really hoping that the majority of our families that are already registered will be able to stay where they are.
Great. Okay, that's right. Great. Okay, and then the other comment that I wanted to make is I was happy to see that the pyramid work, that you guys are going to be able to still incorporate that into the classroom. And I know that's such important work. So I just wanted to make a comment that I noticed that, that I just think it's really excellent. So.
Thanks, Julie. We appreciate that acknowledgement. It's a lot of work, and our team has done an amazing job.
Yeah, and I know it's really making a difference in your kiddos, or our kiddos, I should say. So I appreciate that. So thanks.
Thanks.
Any other board members have questions? Well, you guys get the prize of the night for the fewest questions.
All right, high five, Lisa.
Good job. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Leah.
Yeah, thank you. I know you guys are working super hard, so I really appreciate it.
Okay, I think we'll combine the middle school and high school and kind of call it a secondary presentation. There's similarities, some differences, but similarities. I think we'll start with, just to have Sean and Andy take time, they'll take questions right after they're done presenting, which shouldn't be long.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Thanks, Superintendent Schultz, and thank you, Chair Langer. Busy in the middle school, and just like Minnesota weather, we waited 15 minutes and it changed. And so we can do things right along, help along.
Hey, Andy, can you mute your mic? Andy, can you mute? There you go.
Okay. It sounds like he's in a bowling alley.
You know, you never know. Maybe that's where I am.
Yeah, you never know. So.
It's a very fancy bowling alley with painted white cabinets in it. So.
All right, sorry, Sean.
No worries. So I just want to just go through a few of some operational things that I want to touch on that are perhaps changes from previous years, and I think really good changes for safety sake and bringing our kids in. As you well know, we're bringing in with the hybrid 50% of our kids, and our alpha split is A through K and L through Z. And our friend in the enrollment office, Greg Gusweiler, has done a pretty deep dive into the alpha split and how it works across the middles and secondary, and feels like that is a good split. So I thank him for that. So with that 50% hybrid split, a couple little things we're talking about. So lockers, we're not going to do lockers this year. One of the things we think about with social distancing and middle school kids is that they congregate, and you can't socially distance when you're next to somebody in a locker. So kids will carry backpacks, and we'll give some size recommendations, but we're hoping that that will go much better and be a much safer thing for kids. We've also talked about no FIAD lockers, because we will not be having the kids change in FIAD. If you think about locker rooms and the proximity that that might bring us, that doesn't seem like it's as safe right now. With things get better with the virus, or we have that much needed vaccine, we could dial that back in. And we've also talked to our music teachers about what that would look like in terms of orchestra, band, and choir, and how might we do that? You know, oxygenating the room with singing with that great tone and sound. And so we are working our plans in that area to make sure that kids can get a music experience, but yet it's a safe one. We are working on how do we stagger our passing times so that kids are leaving and not in the hall all at once. Talking about IDs. So one of the things I think is interesting, when kids are wearing masks, it's going to be harder to build those connections, because you're only going to see their eyes. And so you're really going to have to get to know students and smile with your eyes. And being Irish, you know, Irish eyes do smile, I'm told. So we thought that it'd be helpful at the middle level, not only for kids for lunch purposes and checkout, checking out materials purposes, but this is the year they're going to wear lanyards with their IDs on the lanyard. And we'll be able to get to know the kids more, because their ID will have their full picture and their full face. And so I think it's a great change. We'll all be wearing that mask, but we'll get to know kids and be able to connect with them. And because in middle school, that it's really all about relationships. One of the things that I think is incredibly important, as we look at the instructional side of things, is that in an A-day, B-day model, we are just, we're sort of complicating the hybrid just a little bit more, because we always do run an A-day, B-day, and now we have to have a 50%. So if you think about that, that is, the students are in school twice a week, and teachers see their kids once a week. That time is extraordinarily precious that teachers will have with their students. And so to that end, as we think about what instructional practices might be best practices, we know that the flipped model of instruction does offer some benefits. And in fact, at Valley View, we had a number of teachers, when, quite a while ago, and one of them, Mark Carlson, our K-12 math instructional leader, actually do flipped instruction. And so we know at Valley View that that does work, and we know that that is something that we should look into and think about. But I do think that it's important for us to think about instructionally as students do come into the classroom, and we do have them in front of us, and we need to be doing things that we can't do in distance learning. And the main thing that teachers found hard, and parents and kids found hard, was really building the connections with each other, and doing those collaborative activities and things like that. So I don't think we come into the class to do a lecture. We can do a lecture in another way. We come into class to really do an activity, to really take the information that we're given, that we have in front of us, and do something with it. And with that in mind, I think that as tough as this situation is, and it's a big ask, and it's a heavy lift for teachers, no doubt about it, it's really a big ask. I do think it's going to actually have, I'm optimistic that we will be rethinking some of what we do when we have kids in front of us in the future. So it's been such a, it's been such a precious thing to have them in our building, and so we should not take that for granted, even if we come back full-time, face-to-face, in the future. And I'm hopeful of that. We have been pivoting quite frequently with our decisions and how we think about the slow roll that we might bring students in. And on the schedule that you have for the middle school schedule and orientation on your board packet, you can see that this is our latest iteration. And in this iteration, we have our sixth graders coming in every day, recognizing that it is a transition point, like kindergarten, different than kindergarten, like kindergarten. It's also a transition point for parents. As much as it is for students, it is a transition point for parents as well. And so bringing our sixth graders in every day in person would actually be a really positive thing. So when I say that, I'm saying that sixth graders will be in the building, but they'll be in twice that week, splitting the alphabet into that A through K, L through C iteration. While their, sixth graders are in, we have part of our seventh and eighth graders also coming in. And when students are not in, face-to-face during that orientation week, so to speak, we have them working on some independent learning profiles and some synchronous activities. There are ways to do that sort of live, that sort of synchronous-like activities, that doesn't require a teacher to be streaming into the classroom. We have found at Valley View, a number of teachers last spring did do synchronous-like activities and synchronous activities. I think everyone's looking forward to that, that time when they can see their kids. And I think that the way that we do it in terms of our furniture and our hallways, and all that that entails, is going to be, you know, the middle school kids. And so I'm hopeful that, first of all, kids will come with a sense of already realizing that this is a historic time. They're old enough to realize that. And the mask policy and the masking, I'm super hopeful that kids will come with that mask on. And like Ellen mentioned, what do you do if a kid doesn't wear a mask? I mean, we have a conversation, and if it doesn't work, we're not going to allow kids to put other kids at risk. I mean, that is true. So we want to take that seriously. But I know I want to keep this short, but there's so much to say. I could probably talk all night, but then Andy Beaton wouldn't get on, and I would have to, like, you know, answer to him. So I'm not going to do that. I would just say that we have thought about students first, and student safety and staff safety first in all of this. It's really about safety. And for parents who are on this recording, on this live feed, listening, the decision that you make is going to be key for us in developing our next set of plans. And that decision should be made based on the health and the safety of your child. And I think there is nothing more important than that. We can figure the rest of it out. Your child will get a quality, outstanding education, whether it's in the virtual academy, it's hybrid, whatever it might be. We will respond, and we have outstanding staff at the middle level. So I know I don't worry about that, because I know that safety is important, and it's staff safety as well. So we want to make sure that everyone stays safe in this. And we will continue to iterate. We will continue to iterate and modify. And it's really, it's really responding to the data, and responding to the needs of kids, and to what parents tell us they want. So with that, I have a lot more I could say. But I'll just pause there and post questions. Or maybe actually, Andy, do you want to go?
Sure, I'll go ahead, and then maybe we'll just take questions as a secondary. Does that sound okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Schultz, member of the, members of the board, thanks for inviting us here tonight. And thanks, Sean, for your information. You know, I'm going to repeat a number of the things that you've heard tonight. You know, our kind of three big buckets have been in this whole model. First around safety and operations. Second is about a strong instructional model and student learning, you know. And that third is really about wellness, you know, for our staff, and it's also about the learning supports that we can provide for our kids. So some of the things that Sean talked about, I think, will be things that we do at the high school in terms of how we teach culture in the hallways, certainly teaching our students at the high school about wearing their mask. I think they will do a great job, because I think our students are motivated to be at school. And if they want to be at school, and continue to be at school, they will wear their masks, they will wash their hands, they will practice social distancing. And that's an absolute expectation at the high school. And I think our high school kids have such a desire to be there in person, that they will honor that. Some things, other things we're talking about is, is sort of those issues that our kids have, and I shouldn't say issues, some of the things they value, us out of those large group congregations in the hall before they come to school. We're going to have to change some things about how students enter the building, go directly to class. We're thinking about shortening up some passing times to be able to have kids go more direct. Sometimes we use that passing time for moving from class to class, but a lot of it also is about a decompressing and talking to students and their friends. So we're going to have to change some of those things. So there's a trade-off with the things that we have to do when we come back in terms of operations. But I think our students will really rise to the occasion. The next piece, you know, learning supports is that we are really putting a lot of things in place that I think we do when we're face-to-face. Kids will have access to peer tutors during the school day. We will still have student support teams. We still have a robust counseling and social work and school psychs in our building to be able to provide SEL support to our kids. As you know, in supported, we have a new ninth grade teaming model, so we're going to be able to get even closer to our ninth grade students, get to know them, and have sort of caseload representation within those models and that teaming model that we have. So we're really excited about that. We're going to be using our staff the very best way we can. We might be shifting some of those teacher duties that teachers have, and moving those from supervision to really being office hours, because we want to be able to support kids that are home doing online work. So how do kids get academic support when they're home doing online work? Because their teachers are going to be busy teaching face-to-face all day long. So we're really thinking about how do we get support to kids in both settings. I should tell parents, and some of the rumors and discussions out there, with all of our required courses, we will be offering and be able to offer those courses, both in the hybrid model and in the online or EVA model. We will be able to do that. That includes advanced placement courses. So anything that's required, that's part of that required curriculum, we'll be able to offer both. The only time we might lose a class is if we have a specific elective that we have only two, let's say we only have two students that are in the EVA that have, that are in that class. It's going to be difficult for us to shift resources to a very small class. So it's almost like a reregistration for some of those classes. We might have to move some of those to a different elective. That would be the only class that, type of class that we might lose. But everything else, I think, we're trying to maintain those courses that we offer for all of our kids, that they registered for. And remember, last spring, our kids registered for 38,000 course requests that we put into a master schedule, within our schedule of all the courses, both elective and core that they want. And so it's complicated as it is to create that master schedule and get kids those course choices that they want. And now in this environment, it adds another layer of the kids that are fully online, and the kids that are in hybrid, the teachers that will be in the hybrid, and some teachers that also may be fully online as teachers. So again, depending on that data, what we have from our kids and their requests, and also the data that we have and the accommodations we may have to provide for some of our staff, that's going to impact how we run our school. So the data's going to be really important. So I'll echo what Karen said, what everybody's saying. Parents, please go on there and make your choice, so we can have the best possible information to make good choices about our resources, starting next week. And the one thing, I guess, I want to acknowledge about Edina High School teachers, they are extremely dedicated, they work very hard, and they want to be amazing. I mean, they ultimately want to be amazing. Some of the anxiety of our teachers out there, some of it is related to safety for themselves, their families, and so on. But part of it also is just related to the load and what they can handle. And they want to be great for those kids that are home doing online learning, and they want to be great for those kids that are there doing face-to-face. So I think, again, we said this about this last spring, giving our teachers grace as they move through this model is going to be really important for this community. And I had a teacher the other day, a veteran teacher, says, well, last spring, I felt like a brand-new teacher, and now I get to feel like a brand-new teacher again, you know, this fall. So I think that we are, we are asking a lot of them, so we do take care of them and consider that. So we're looking forward to the challenge. We know there's going to be more challenges as they come, so your support is really appreciated. So we'll just take questions.
Thank you, Andy and Sean. I'll just open up to board member questions before I ask mine, my questions I have.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. This is actually.
My screen might be frozen.
No, I was like, I kept trying, it wouldn't let me unmute. I'm not sure, this, this may be something actually that goes across all grades, but what's the expectation that we have? So if we have students who need to self-quarantine, and we have an expectation that that may happen for our hybrid students, what would their learning model look like at home for those, say, potentially, two weeks? Will they just say, I'm a hybrid student, and I go Monday, Tuesdays? Does that mean I'm actually just going to be doing what the second half of my class is doing? What's the expectation? They're not going to automatically go to virtual academy, right?
Right. So I think we view it the same way if a student had, sometimes you have a student that has an illness, and a prolonged illness, they still stay connected with their current teacher and their current section, and they're doing work more independently with the support of teachers, so that we would have the same viewpoint. They would stay connected. We wouldn't disenroll them from the current section that they're in for a temporary situation. Obviously, our kids that are fully online in the EVA are going to be more permanent in that regard.
Okay. And then my other question is, is it the same expectation that Katie talked about in elementary, that if you look at the percentage of time that we have an expectation of our hybrid students being synchronous and asynchronous, is that similar to what that percentage of time expectation would look like for our EVA students, too? So say the expectation is, I'm just throwing out, 50% synchronous, 50% asynchronous, is there a different ratio that we're looking at for EVA?
You know, I think EVA is probably going to, those kids are going to have, again, a combination of synchronous and asynchronous learning. I think in terms of the ratio, I think you're talking about similar in terms of two days a week that the kids are getting in the hybrid. I think you would look at something like that, that would be in a similar realm for the EVA of live classes. And last year, when our kids were fully in distance learning, some kids, as our teachers were kind of toe-dipping into this, some teachers were doing a lot of synchronous learning, and some were doing very little. We didn't have as kind of firm, as sort of universal sort of standards that we have. I think that we are, would have those expectations for the teachers that are working with our kids in EVA of having synchronous activities, whether it's small group, full group, during the week, in combination with asynchronous learning.
I think a lot, yes. So I agree with that. Yes, and I think, again, I'm going to go back to the parents getting their choices and letting us know that. I think that, depending on how many kids would choose that, I think that that has to be a factor in how we manage it as well. If there's only like 10 kids, they'll just follow along and be part of a class likely. But if there's like, you know, half of our kids, it might look different. So again, I don't, I keep saying to people, and this is not going to inspire confidence, but I don't know what I don't know right now about what the models are going to be. And so being open to that, you know, we want to get kids connected in and feeling like they're part and they belong. That is so essential for kids, and that's what we missed a lot of last spring. And so we don't want to take that lightly.
Okay. And Andy, is the high school still planning a seven-period day?
When we went through the iterations, you know, we talked about the block schedule in terms of transitions. But when we went to this 2-1-2 models, the teachers felt that there's a real benefit to seeing all their kids for two days in a row. So we are going to be in the seven-period day model.
And will that include an advisory?
It will not include an advisory in that seven-period day model. If we had been in full-distance learning, we were going to be in our regular sort of modified block schedule with advisory. But just to be able to do this and see all their teachers during that period of time, we're just going to be in the seven periods.
Okay. What about for you, Sean? Will there be an advisory?
Absolutely. We will have an advisory. We're thinking every day, maybe even on the asynchronous day, that one would be to be decided. But we would be thinking about doing advisory every day. The other piece to that I just want to offer up is that we would likely not be doing as much flex, because when we think about what flex does, it moves kids and regurgitates them in smaller groups. And I'm not sure that that is going to be the best practice right now in a hybrid model. I think when we would go full face-to-face, we could robustly bring back our flex at the middle levels. But I think it is a concern of ours with trying to keep cohorts together, remixing kids at different levels, that could be problematic.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anything else, Janie? So Owen, it looks like you have some questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. Sean, this is primarily for you. I love your oxygenating room comment. It's a fetching illusion. I don't know if I quite understand it. But you said it regarding quieter. Does that mean that, what do you mean by that, if I could ask?
What do I mean by that? So when you sing, you expound more oxygen, and the more oxygen that you are putting out, if you think about the singing, you're sitting up straight, and you've got more sound production coming out. So when you have more sound production coming out, you have more of the micro particles, which are the way that COVID is spread. And so thinking about, first of all, singing with a mask on, if teachers have a face shield on, they've got mask and face shield. So even when you sing with a mask on for kids, you're likely having some of the same results. And so we're just trying to think about, where do we sing? Now, the Minnesota Department of Health suggests that you could sing outside, and that's a great suggestion for a couple months of the year. Not for much, much time. You could space students out, perhaps in a large space, but large spaces are also at a premium, especially at Valley View this fall, but they're at a premium. So one of the things we're thinking about is, could kids sing at home? And then, when they're in school, maybe they could have a partner conversation, a partner work with the kids who are hybrid-ing in school and the kids who are remote. a partner work with the kids who are hybrid-ing in school and the kids who are remote. And so what would that look like? So we are really taking it very seriously about the oxygenation. And Mary Hyman might want to, I mean, Mary's still here. Mary and I have talked about this, Andy, and was in a meeting with me on it, but it's just that production of more oxygen. And in terms of like fire, it's that, you know, it's like getting into that, you know, the cardio mode and expending more oxygen and the sweat and all that that comes with it.
I think one of the things that we did, Owen, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Owen.
Andy.
I was just going to add to what Sean was saying.
Settled down on what you're going to be doing with choir, for instance. You might have it outside, but you're still in process with that. Am I picking that up?
No, what I can tell you, what we talked about with choir is, I think we just want to take it slow and look at a ramp-up of what we're doing. We want to make sure we can feel comfortable. Because you have to remember that we had specific meetings with secondary music, so that's choir, band, orchestra. We also had a meeting with physical education. There's different variables that have impact potentially on COVID in both of those spaces about how you work out and breathe, how you sing and breathe, how you blow into an instrument with your, you know, your spit into that instrument. So we're talking about, and also, in those areas, they happen to sometimes be our largest ensembles. So you could have a band that has 90 students in it, right? So, and because of that, then they have sectional periods during the day. So we're thinking about how we split those courses, how we use the sectional periods so that we can actually reduce the numbers in those bands when they're rehearsing, even if we are in a 50% model. I think choir specifically is thinking that they are going to start more in that mode of having, like Sean said, when the kids are doing distance learning, maybe they're doing some of that singing like they did this spring with recordings and things like that, and do more music theory and partnership, at least at the start. But then we think there's some possibilities, especially with our staffing, to be able to slowly maybe build in kind of a small-group instruction that is singing in a larger space using our auditoriums, which we're not going to have as large auditorium, you know, concerts and so on. But they just, I think, want to build that up slowly, which I respect, and I think that's the smart way to do it. So I don't know if, Mary, you wanted to add anything else to that, but that's what we've been talking about with those groups.
I'm guessing that there's going to be more guidance on things like choir and band. You know, the Department of Health is trying to be also very, very cautious. And so things like, for students of asthma, and if we're giving a nebulization treatment, we always have to think that, remember that COVID is a respiratory virus. So anything that's coming out of our mouth or nose when we're talking, breathing heavy, or, you know, deep breaths with band or choir, that's when we need to be so, so careful. So that's why social distancing is so important.
Does that answer your question, Owen?
Thank you.
I think it's a work in progress.
Yeah, it's a work in progress. Okay, thank you.
Ellen?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I know the risks really seem to be different for middle and high school than it is for elementary school. And I'm just wondering, when you went through the survey, did you do any cross tabs separating secondary, the voice of the parents and the teachers, and secondary from the voice of elementary parents and teachers?
Randy, can you answer that? I think you looked at that data.
Yeah, what we did, and I can't, and I won't necessarily be able to speak to this conclusively, but what we did is we separated the data out by site, and then we pushed that data to our site leaders.
Okay.
Did you notice if there was any differences between primary and secondary?
None specifically. I think we had some pretty consistent concerns about, number one, safety, social distancing, questions about health protocols, et cetera. And then another big one was around continuity of the asynchronous and synchronous expectation from classroom to classroom, teacher to teacher.
Yeah, and okay, thank you. I just am wondering, because I, it just seems as if, both in the format of the way that the middle schools and high schools run, and that you have many more contacts and many more passing periods, and it just seems inherently just a different animal as well as the contagion. So, but thank you, I just wanted to see if the teachers had been asked about that and if you had seen any differences. The other question is, for when we're talking about the Virtual Academy in secondary, I'm just wondering if you have, when you say you're offering all classes, could you just speak to a little bit more specifically all classes? Is it all English and science?
So I think what I said is that certainly our required classes, from a general chemistry class to an AP chemistry class, to a ninth-grade government class to an AP government class, we will be able to run all of those classes, because I think of the volume of sections that we have in those areas. The issue becomes that, let's say I have some classes in my building that have a single section right now, by registration. And if I have five students that are in the Virtual Academy that requested a particular class, the question is, how do you have those kids participate in that singleton class? So the options are, they drop the class and take something else, right? The other option is, I can't shift a teacher resource to a classroom of five kids, because that balloons up the class sizes in other areas. Or you can kind of have the sidecar piece that Sean was talking about, is that you could have a couple of kids that were home, but that are staying connected with what that hybrid teacher is. Now, remember, with each of these scenarios, you create a new layer of complexity for teachers. So you have a teacher that has a class of 30, that 15 of them are in front of them all day and they're doing instruction. 15 of them, and that's if it's perfectly even, 15 of them are doing online, they're doing online instruction, the kids are at home. And then the question is, do you have a separate student that is still, that is full-time, online learning? Because then you're thinking about how you do your planning from whether it is a consecutive type of planning, right? In a classroom like mathematics, where one idea builds upon itself. So you may have kids getting a particular content area online, an instruction online, and the other getting it face-to-face. And then the next content area or lesson, it's reversed, as opposed to saying, we repeat lessons, because if it's consecutive, it's hard to repeat those lessons. So there's just a tremendous amount of complexity for our teachers to be thinking about how they deliver high-quality instruction. I know they can do it, but again, it's going to be a challenge for them. And then you add another layer of students that are full-time online. Now, if we have a good number of students that register for full online, then that makes it simpler for classes that I can make a full online section. You know, so I could be a teacher that has four sections that are in the hybrid, and one of my sections is fully online. I may have to make choices to say, a particular course is a fully online course, because of the teacher that offers that. It could be the only teacher that teaches this course, and that teacher happens to be a teacher that can't come in because of their own health conditions. So these are the problems and things and situations that we're thinking about going forward. But again, I think we will be able to deliver in hybrid and for those kids that are in fully online in EVA.
And Ellen, I would say the same thing. I would say so much of all of this is just dependent on the numbers we get for the Edina Virtual Academy, and how that plays with, and where it plays with our classes that we have in middle school. I don't know if I could paint you a picture, one way or the other. My goal would always be to make sure every student gets what they registered for. We have every student registered for their classes. And we, you know, my assistant principal, Eric Lo, spent a summer developing schedules for them. So it would never be our intent that we would want to take them out of a class or tell them to choose another class. Our intent would always be that they stay in the class that they registered for and that best suits them. But again, I don't know what I don't know in terms of what they're going to select and how that might play with our staffing. And again, the expectation that we would be asking teachers to not only be in a hybrid, but to partially staff a distance, a virtual academy, that is three separate and distinct preparations that are very different. And again, it's, hybrid's a big ask to put that together. So I don't know, but I'll know more when I know how many kids are going to be in the Virtual Academy and what that looks like staffing-wise at a middle level.
Thank you, I really want to thank you all for those answers. I have one quick other question I asked.
Lenny had something related to that.
So, since the state has said that, at least I believe the state has said that we have to have an online option, I think that for classes where there's a single class offered, we should potentially err on the side of making the class virtual as opposed to hybrid and telling the virtual students to register for another. But I think we can save that till another day, because we'll see what the enrollment looks like. And I don't really want to create an issue until we get one. Just an observation.
You know, another thing, Lenny, that's a possibility, and again, I'm just speaking for the high school, but depending on a teacher, I could have a teacher that has a health condition and wants to be, and is a great teacher, and can deliver something really well. You could end up having potentially a student that's on the hybrid that, within their schedule, has a full online course. So I might be a student that has six courses, and one of them might be an online course, even though I am a hybrid student because of the teacher availability. So, and we would have those students supervised, and they would do that online course, or we'd have a partner para so they could be live. So this is a possibility within that structure to keep kids in the courses that they want.
Right, and I would say, I wouldn't, I'm not, so it'd be online. I'm thinking of like, that could come up, the teacher, due to a health condition, was unable to teach in the building. They could remote in, and the students could be in a classroom, and the teacher would be on the screen teaching them. And I have often said, you know, there's many teachers in our district and in our building that are outstanding, and kids would benefit from them however they deliver the instruction.
So that gives me a great chance for a quick segue, which is, so what supports do we have in place for teachers for three areas? One, for choice, in other words, choosing whether they teach in the school or home. Second area is professional development, and the third is assistance with stress. Because no matter which model that teacher gets to, I think we're likely to see elevated stress levels. And so we've talked a lot about schedules and students. I just want to flip for a minute and have you talk about teachers.
So Nikki, can you talk a bit about just the surveys we're doing with teachers right now? And then maybe Jeff can talk about some of the stress work?
Of course, and so we did do a survey for teacher preference. And basically, the question that we asked is, would you prefer to teach in the virtual, the Eva form, or would you prefer to teach in the hybrid form? And so as we're doing placements, we will definitely take those things into consideration. The second component of things is, we also asked if you have some, any type of a disability that would preclude you from coming to serve in the hybrid model. And so we do have a variety of people who has responded to that survey also, from teachers to custodians, to anybody who will be coming back with us in the fall. And so both of those resources are out there for teachers. And I know that Jeff can speak to some of the work he's been doing with the emotional wellness of our teachers and employees.
So on the side of support for teachers, we're actively in the process of putting together some professional development for teachers at the beginning of the year for one aspect of that, but then also having, trying to develop our continuum of services that teachers are able to access during the course of the year, whether that's making them aware of available services that they've had in the past, or making them aware of new types of supports that we're trying to get in place as well, with furthering our relationship with Frazier Services and so forth. The professional development is really about the development of a self-care plan, and it's a comprehensive self-care plan that we're wanting to do, not just with teachers, but with all of our staff at the beginning of the school year during our in-service time. And it's really focusing in on life balance in six different areas that are essential to really having good life balance, but then also putting together a plan for, what do I do when I'm in crisis? What do I do when I'm under stress? And then connecting them with a pathway to say, what are my next steps when I'm starting to experience a high level of stress, rather than just getting it out or suffering in isolation? That's one of the things that we find with the distance learning model, and even with the model of the hybrid, it's going to be awfully isolatory, because we're trying to limit those social interactions to the greatest extent possible. But we want to have pathways for teachers, because when you're under stress, you don't think about what it is you need, you think about how we feel. And so having that plan that they can refer back to will assist them in being able to access the resources that are available to them. And so that's what we want to try to put together, again, for teachers and for paraprofessionals, for administrators. We want to make everybody aware of the resources that are available and get them connected to those resources as quickly as possible. But it begins with a good self-care regimen. And if we can get people to start practicing that self-care regimen in a balanced format and encourage it from the top down all the way through, we will be successful in keeping our cups full so we can fill the cups of the students that we serve.
And Lenny, what was your third question?
It had to do with professional development, but just to... And just to piggyback, we did put together a frequently asked questions for employees where they can find all of these resources. So that way, it's a one-stop shop. And we do plan to link it to our communication page if it's not already up there. But we did send that out on Tuesday afternoon along with those two surveys, just so, like I said, it was a one-stop shop for all of our employees.
And you know, if I could add one other thing, certainly the Wednesday is an opportunity for us to split cohorts and do that cleaning of the building. But it also is a critical time for our teachers to be able to meet with their teams, to be able to do planning, because remember, they are working to prepare lessons for kids, both in the online and the face-to-face format at the same time. So your support in that area is really critical. It's something that all the principals in the district advocated for our teachers and have that ongoing time to be able to prepare the kind of lessons that we want.
And I would say to that, and we are trying to really work smart with the time that teachers have when they're teaching during the week in the hybrid, making sure that they have access to their full preparation time and that they have that available in its entirety. And we don't have a lot of superfluous things going on that we try to, you know, meet about this, meet about that. Sort of putting all the meetings to a Wednesday that we might have to have in allowing for meeting time and for individual and collaborative preparation time. So I feel like that is the right thing and the smart thing to do, and as principals, we all feel that way.
So I'm going to save my other questions for when we have data on alignment of teacher choices with the Virtual Academy or hybrid, just because, again, same thing, I don't really want to discuss an issue that may not exist. But I just will note that we may come back to that question. And I'll just note, I cut Ellen off, so sorry about that.
No, that's okay, you were following up on that question, and that's great. My next question is something completely different. And it has to do with the reality of both the hybrid and Eva models. And that is the issue that we're realizing, widening of the achievement gap. And I'm just wondering if some of the school leaders can talk about how they're going to be addressing this with both of these models?
We are identifying, and I think, again, with the idea of working smarter, identifying support for kids. We have some classes which are, I wouldn't call them intervention classes, but I would call them classes which help kids get the skills they need to be successful. And so we're going to run those classes wherever a child is and go into a coaching model. But I'm working with staff who might be working in a coaching capacity, some of our student services folks. How do we make sure we have a well-designed safety net for all students to make sure we're checking in with them, the social, emotional, but yet the academic? And how do we, how do we support that? You know, last spring, we had our super... You know, last spring we had our super subs in our building were, um, critical. They were so helpful in, in checking in with students and helping them. But we, um, my fear as well is that the students who, um, who are struggling academically, um, the gap widens when we can't support them as well. And so it is mission critical that we don't let that happen and that we remediate and accelerate them through what they need to be doing, um, so that we can close that gap. And, um, and you know, make sure they're highly engaged in doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve, do you want to talk a bit about just access relative to Ellen's question? And, um, just ensuring that, uh, the technology is available for all our students?
Certainly, again, good evening. Um, so what we've done is we, uh, continue to ensure that there's sufficient devices in the secondary schools. And so we are distributing currently distributing sixth grade Chromebooks right now. And we've distributed over half of those Chromebooks, uh, prior to the start of the school. So that's been a, a good metric that we have. In third through fifth grade, there will be a Chromebook there that's been checked out already that the student checked out last spring that they continued to use over the summer. They can continue to use it this upcoming school year, or they can check out a Chromebook. We've pre-checked those devices out and we'll have them ready for the start of the school year. Either if they do EVA or if they do hybrid learning, uh, we'll work through that first week to do materials distribution. Are there, and we are pushing down towards kindergarten, first and second grade as well. So second grade students, we pre-checked out a iPad to those students if they don't already have a device. Uh, and we'll distribute those much like we're doing with the third through fifth grade. And then for K one and two, we have sufficient devices for those families that need those. Again, a, all the Chromebooks, uh, that our district own are filtered so that we ensure that, um, students are going to appropriate websites. And we've worked with the deans at the elementary, middle and high schools to work with them on, uh, when, uh, students may encounter inappropriate content or may be making bad choices around technology. We feel confident that that's going to be in place. We're also working with Wi-Fi hotspots. And so as of last year, we were able to address all the requests for internet access through a partnership between Edina Public Schools and Edina Give and Go. Over the summer, we've made, uh, contact with Comcast and we think that Comcast Essentials, which provides low-cost, uh, home internet access through Comcast or Xfinity is another option that we have for our families. And we think that that's going to be a good option because it provides a significantly higher, uh, speed, internet speed. And will allow it to accompany, uh, uh, to penetrate a whole household. So we won't be sitting through a MiFi hotspot, but rather the internet will work through the whole household. So we're working with families, we're working with our cultural liaisons to identify those families where, who, uh, and take advantage of that offer and getting them hooked up prior to the start of the school. I'll stop and answer any questions that there might be.
I have that Julie and Owen have questions. So I'll send it to Julie and then we'll get you Owen, okay?
Thanks. Um, okay, so I have a couple, um, questions. One is both to both middle school and high school. So if a student were to opt into the virtual academy, does that preclude them from any activities that would be going on at the schools that they would have to part, they would need to participate in face-to-face? For example, if you have a student who, oh my, that was, that was Matt playing a joke. I'm just going to call him out because he knew that was going to happen. Okay, anyway, that's very funny, Matt. Um, okay, so would it preclude a student, like if they made the soccer team, right? So they would need to come to the school and participate in that. Is there any, um, have you guys talked about that? Are we, that's okay for a student to do? I assume it is. I just wanted to say it out loud because I know I've been asked that question. And so I want to give you the chance.
So I think Troy, Troy has left the building, but, um, the high school league I think has, has ruled that has said, you know, if we were in full distance learning, you would not be having those activities. Uh, but in the hybrid model, yeah, students that are participating on the soccer team, since soccer is running this fall, or girls tennis, yes, if they were in the hybrid and home that day, then they could, they would come to school for that practice or whatever that is at the end of the school day. So yes, they can participate.
Okay, even if they're in the EVA model?
Yes, so I, I think we just have to clear that up. So if students are in EVA, it is Edina High School, Edina High School teachers, Edina High School classes, Edina High School transcript. Um, it's just the delivery mechanism is just different.
Great, okay, that's great. Um, the second question is, um, for our rising seniors that, you know, there's been, um, obviously a lot of prep that goes into your senior year, including your ACT test, right? College visits, all of those things that have now kind of gotten, um, smashed up and banked up now against juniors that are coming in. Um, is there, um, plans, this is kind of very specific, but is there plans to do the ACT test? The statewide ACT test for our students? I know I can't get my senior registered until December or my upcoming senior. So like, I know that's another concern. Is there any plans for that? Can we even do that, um, logistically? It's a question.
There is a, there is a plan to do a statewide ACT this fall. Um, at the high school, we're working on that right now. Part of the issue is too, is being able to do that in a safe way and then proctors. So we're likely to do that on a day where other students don't come to school. So it would, you know, we're likely, if we do that, we would probably only have, uh, juniors and seniors in the building at that time. Um, so because we need the staff to be able to be proctors in the building and have those classes, uh, for proctoring be small enough, um, to be able to do that. So I, I know there's the demand, you know, where we would predict potentially 400 to 500 students that might want to take, uh, the ACT this fall because they haven't been able to do that. They've been prepping for their ACT and maybe hopefully this whole ACT thing will just maybe not be an issue, um, going forward. Let's just hope that we just keep moving on with colleges and find a different way. Um, but we know it's a reality right now and some students that want to qualify for scholarships. They've been preparing, they want to do well. So yes, we are in the works right now, planning for a Edina High School statewide ACT.
Excellent.
Just to be clear, Andy, that would be limited to Edina High School students?
Yes, Edina High School students statewide ACT. We still would, we're going to offer our, our, the ACT on national test dates if it's safe. And those would be typically on the Saturdays and so on. Uh, but we are, this is would be the Edina High School only.
Okay, you just, when you say statewide, it seems to be different than.
Yeah, they call it a statewide ACT versus a national test date. There's certain kind of, um, rules around that. So you know, my testing coordinator, Jen Carter and Jeff Marshall are awesome and, um, would be able to speak to that. But we are in the process of planning a school Edina only ACT on campus.
That's great, thank you. Um, and then, um, I loved, I loved listening to the conversation and the questions about the classes and the, um, you know, the extracurricular or an extra class that, um, if you have only one student or two, a couple of students that sign up and it's a singleton, all the different ideas around that. So we can make, you know, I know some of them are, you know, one could be creative foods, but another one is French five. So for some people that is a requirement for in there, right? It's, it's not necessarily required, but it would be. So I just, I liked hearing all the different thoughts around that and how we can make that work. So I just want to make a comment on that. Um, and then my last question is, I asked this too of, um, with the elementary. Can you just, um, address and clarify that if a student is in a class, um, you know, comes to, is, is in the AB cohort day, um, or Monday, Tuesday cohort day, that the lessons are going to be continuous? Um, that the curriculum would be continuous and not, um, just, because I, I guess I'm, I'm not totally clear that that would happen. I know we talked about a flip model, but, um, can you just talk to that? So that I, I want to make sure that we are looking at, and I know there's a thousand challenges with this, but is it continuous learning so that they're getting new content the whole week? Or is it repetitive? And I know it'll look a little bit different, I think, for each secondary level. But if you guys could speak to that, that would be great.
Well, my lens as a teacher, a former teacher is, is IB. And my teachers have been spinning and thinking about what this would look like for them. Some of it is course dependent in many ways. So let's say I'm an English teacher and I have my two days face-to-face. And as Sean alluded to, we don't want that face-to-face time to be wasted by kids sitting there just listening to a lecture the whole time. The whole reason to bring kids back is the opportunity for peer-to-peer interaction and peer-to-teacher interaction. So if I'm an English teacher and I have a unit on a particular piece that we're reading or writing prompt or whatever that might be, I might do something, um, different with the students that are at home doing distance learning versus those that are face-to-face and then repeat that later in the week and flip it. So they have that lesson. So one, it's the same content, but taught in two different ways and each gets that, that same treatment. Now, if I'm a math teacher, I might have a different idea. Um, I might say we're introducing, um, you know, standard deviation in a statistics class. And I may have the kids at home watching my lecture that I recorded on standard deviation. And I'm delivering a similar content in my face-to-face class. And, and then on the opposite two days, um, it might be something we're moving on, but it's just flipped. So some kids are going to get both the face-to-face treatment and the online treatment. But that, in that regard, it could be on different topics. So the content is the same, but it's just the delivery mechanism could be different throughout the week. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, yep. Okay, answers my question.
I would just offer, um, Julie as well. I think it's really important that we don't, we can create new gaps with learning and that we progress kids through. I also think and understand that this is heavy lift, but I think there's ways that we can think about, um, how we, how we do it. And I think that's, that's a magical conversation. I'm not saying flipped is the only game in town. I think it's a good game and it's one to explore. Um, but I, I, I do think it's important that kids have a, an expectation that they will have new content and they may get it in a variety of ways. But that they'll have, they'll keep progressing through their learning. And that for me is, um, of the utmost importance.
Yeah, and to make sure, I want to make that, I asked that question too, not just for the continuity with students, but also teachers, right? Like what, I mean, it's, it's a huge ask and I want to make sure it's not too big. I mean, it, it feels giant for our teachers to be able to do that, which is, I, I appreciate you saying, Andy, use the word Wednesday as a critical day for that planning for them. Um, and I echo that. I think that is, um, an untouchable day for, for our teachers to prepare. So you guys, um, thank you. That's it, that's all my questions.
Thank you.
Real quick, are we looking at, uh, live streaming, Eddie, on the virtual academy? So for example, if you've got a history class that happens to be a lecture, uh, we looked into whether we can live stream that to the people who are doing the virtual academy?
You know, we would have that capability to do something like that potentially. It's just whether that is helpful. You know, I think if you're going to, um, you know, if you're sitting in the back of the classroom and you're trying to keep kids engaged in a lecture and now you're not even in the back of the classroom anymore, you're, you're at home, right? Or somewhere else listening to that. I think that, um, some of those things in terms of listening to a lecture, I think sometimes can be accomplished in that if you're going to do something that is more asynchronous, where you're just sort of listening and so on. I think some of that maybe is served better by a screencast where they can stop and start and do that. And then do that kind of flipped piece, um, just from the strict, strictly engagement. Um, now if we had a student in French five that, that Julie talked about, that is the single student that is in EVA, um, that wants to continue to take French five. Now that might be something that we want them to join in some way in that class, in a virtual fashion. Um, because they're that student out there that needs to stay connected with that hy, with that hybrid class. Does that make sense? So it would really, it would depend. Um, but I think that just the idea of a student, um, sort of being the camera in the corner, listening to a lecture. And again, we're hoping to not do as much sort of direct instruction because we want to have that collaboration of our kids when we use that limited, uh, face-to-face time.
Yep, I would say you can do a seminar, um, a seminar lecture in a way other than when you do it in your classroom. And what that also does is if you do the seminar, um, let's say in a screencast, you're really, um, leveling the playing field of how kids get that seminar. And then kids at, at home respond in one, they respond to the learning, the lecture in one way. And kids at school may, may respond to the learning in a way that's more collaborative. But there's also opportunities then, um, to think about like a remote end that doesn't necessarily have to be a t, teacher coming in streaming. It could be kids in school having a conversation with kids who are not in school in a collaborative group. So sometimes kids are our best, like little creative thinkers. They will work together and, and create a synchronous sort of, um, experience where maybe one wasn't there, but they, they can take care of that and, and do it. And so, and our teachers are extraordinarily creative and so are our kids. They'll, they'll think of some of those ways that we might be spinning, but they'll get there.
Yeah, and I'll just add in a technology basis, uh, both Sean and Andy have talked, um, our teachers have had a long tradition of doing flipped instruction and, and they do it, they're well-regarded around the state. I think of, of the way they've done flipped instruction. And that allows for anytime, anywhere learning. And so those, uh, those objects, we can deliver those live, but then they get recorded and put in our learning management system. And then the other feature that will be brought on this fall is the ability for our teachers to have what are called breakout rooms and their live and their video, uh, Google meets. And so that they'll have those abilities to have those small group of students, student interactions within a kind of, uh, observed, uh, virtual setting. And so those are just additional features that are going to allow for that student-to-student learning as well as having a teacher guide the learning as well.
You're muted, Erica. Sorry. Owen, sorry, thank you for your patience. I was, I was trying to turn it over to you, but I was muted the whole time.
All right, all right, thank you. Um, this is, um, follow, a follow-up to Ellen's question about equity. And, um, there is growing evidence that the, um, our academic response to, this is a national thing, but our academic response to, um, uh, stay at home order with digital learning and so forth has had negative impacts on, um, equity. And these are unusual times and may, uh, require unusual actions. And so to that end, I wonder about something on the order of home visits to our academically vulnerable families. I've heard of success with this in some, um, some other school districts. And, um, it's often the teachers who will actually do the home visits. Just wondering if we've thought of anything like that? If this is beyond the pale? Any comments about that, Sean, Andy, Jeff?
I, I think that we can do an at-home visit virtually. I mean, so that would be where I would take it right now. And we did a number of those, um, visits, um, you know, checking in on kids, um, last spring. And we'll continue to do it and probably have a more structured system and a, an array of people who might be able to do that from Paris to, um, security, to office, to principals, to teachers, to super subs. And so like trying to build a connection. And I think that virtual check-in, um, would be what I would feel comfortable with right now. Um, I, I, I love home visits. I'm just not sure, um, for me and thinking about, um, the situation wherein that that would be, um, something that I would do. But certainly we want to check in in some way.
Sure, and I'm actually glad you brought that up because it is, it is unrealistic in some ways to do it. Um, how, what kind of response? How successful have the virtual home visits been?
Good. Um, my favorite was I called a student, um, and a sixth grade student. And he, um, his mom answered and he said, "The phone is for you." And so I had this great conversation, um, with a sixth grader, asking why he hadn't done his work and would he start doing his work and would he have due today? And his mom told me that was awesome because he kept telling her that he didn't have any work. And so it was, I mean, in some ways, there were some opportunities for students for leadership and self-management in, um, last spring that I had not seen in all my years of being a principal that was kind of fun. I had a number of kids email me over the year. I, I had more kids email me. And so for all the things that we can say maybe it wasn't, it was an opportunity for kids to rise up and be leaders for themselves. And so I, I appreciated that. And I think that, um, the virtual visits were helpful in doing that.
You know, and if I'm just going to just add to that, you know, last spring and kind of our emergency distant learning, what we did is we redeployed a lot of support staff, clerical, super subs, security, um, to help us as in many ways, kind of case managers for kids and sometimes parents. Um, and we had tremendous success last spring with our attendance. We had about 97% attendance, which is actually a little bit better than when we were face-to-face of our kids being engaged every day. And we actually did do a few home visits last spring when we really were not being, getting, had sort of breakthrough with a family. You know, we, that happened last spring with a few. And so I think coming up this year in this model, I think we again, last year collected tremendous data with our student support teams. We'll be able to do that again based on attendance data and academic data and find resources to be able to support families when they're at home. But we're also hopeful that some of those kids that struggled in distance learning last spring will have that opportunity for that face time with their teachers that will make a difference for them.
Did you have more questions or follow up questions, Owen?
Um, no. That, so actually maybe to follow up a little bit here. So Andy, did I hear you say that paras and other non-teaching staff were deployed at working with vulnerable families?
What we did is, is in terms of contact, what we did is so we had a group of people that we use as resource people. So if we had a student in a certain alpha group that missed a class in attendance, they might give a call to connect with that family and say, "Hey, we missed you in, in your third hour algebra class." And they would say, "Oh, no, I forgot to do my ABA and so on." But then we also had some kids that were struggling and we worked with their families sometimes because the parents were saying we needed some support and so on. How do I give my student this information? There could have been a language barrier. So we just always said, you know, some of those people that may be doing face to face work on a regular basis this spring, we just redeployed them to help us in different ways. So that's why we were able to get through to so many families this spring. So I think we'll still try to be smart this year about how we use our resources wisely. All of our staff want to serve, whether it's clerical, paras, security, they all have tremendous skills to work with people. And so we just try to use them the best way possible.
That's exciting. I've not heard that. That's very creative, very inspiring.
Might I add a little bit from the elementary on that same topic?
Yeah.
We actually, we actually deployed our staff in similar ways. And one of the things that we're using as we are planning for this fall is that ability for us to connect with families and make sure that they have somebody that they connect with at school, whether it be the classroom teacher, or a para, or a principal, or, you know, whoever it might be, social worker, school psych. So putting that group of resource folks together and helping families problem solve. Part of what we're doing at the elementary is we have identified what we're kind of informally right now calling our priority students. We've identified students that we know meet something more than what the typical experience is going to be. We've identified those kids with an academic need. We've identified those students whose, you know, home situation might not support us connecting with them well from a distance. We, we just know that there are a variety of reasons why kids are not going to engage with us at the level that we want them to. And are those kids that we need to consider bringing in more often? You know, when we talk about phasing in kids who are more dependent right now on us for, for a little bit more, those are the kids that we're identifying. And how do we deploy staff to do that? How do we, how do we identify those families? So just being all of those resources together and knowing your families. And I think that, that how we start this year with that kind of onboarding or that orientation or those back to school activities is really going to be key for setting everybody up for what do you need? How can we help you? And on the para note, we had in the spring periodically had families contact us saying, "We're really struggling. A kid is struggling." And we had para professionals who were able to do regular check ins with kids. They'd do a Google meet. We'd set it up with the parent and say, "Okay, every day at 10 o'clock, Jody is going to be calling, calling and getting on a Google meet with your child." And their job is just to do a check in. "How you doing? What do you need?" That was highly successful. And I think the more ways we find to support individual families, you know, when they're not with us, I just think that that's a win-win.
That's great. Thank you guys.
Probably more than you wanted to hear, but I wanted to hear that you knew we were doing it.
Yeah. That's great. So I think that I, these are all wonderful questions and you guys have obviously put so much effort into this. So I thank you. I think I want, I'm going to try to move us to our next section since we're already over schedule. Not that you guys aren't doing an outstanding job answering, but, um, so I think we'll just wrap it up for secondary. And thank you for piping in Karen as well. I appreciate that note about what you're doing in the elementary as well. So I think John is our next.
Our anchor, our anchor is Jeff Jorgensen. So Jeff will talk about special ed and a little bit more about social learning.
Sure. Jeff Jorgensen, bringing it home. Thank you Chair Allenberg, Dr. Schultz, and esteemed board members. I'm happy to, to anchor this team today. And it is good that I anchor just simply because it is about, you know, we've, we've put together a hybrid model and the Dynav Virtual Learning Academy coming together and really it's, it's an ordinal process of development. And so first is the establishment of our regular education model for all students. And in our, in our special education teams have been involved with those discussions all the way from the very get go. And now we go into the hard work of trying to make the hybrid model and the virtual learn, or the virtual academy model work for all of our special education students or 504 students. I will even speak to the ML students or any students that would be considered to be more of the dependent learners or learners that need additional support in order to be successful. And not all of those students are identified as special needs, but I do want to remark on all of those students because it isn't necessary, if you have disability for distance learning, not to be a real effective model for you and you might need additional supports. That could be developmental, that could be a lot of different things. But special education model is going to focus very strongly, as I said in my report, on, on those, on those elements of relationship development with our students and our families, maximizing our direct service time with students. A lot of parents are asking about what's this model going to look like? And what I can say to that is, is that in the hybrid service model, we will have access to a continuum of services much like we would in traditional face to face services. We will be pushing in, we will be pulling out in the same manner and, or in a slightly modified manner as we try to take into consideration the number of contacts that a student is having on a daily basis. So we may end up having conversations with families that will move us towards compiling those service times so that students are still getting the, the complete amount of service time that they have identified on their IEPs, but it might be in, in longer intervals or longer duration, or it might be in shorter intervals where we actually serve students more in a one-on-one basis rather than in the small group settings that we typically do. And so a student that may have been receiving, say, 30 minutes a day worth of time, might get a 15 minute one-on-one session with this, with the, with the teacher instead of having the 30 minutes in a small group session. This is intense time and in our dialogues with teachers, we've been having a lot of really great conversations with them just about how much they can get done in a shorter period of time when I'm able to focus in on a single student at a time as opposed to trying to work with a small group of three to five students. That doesn't sound very large, but again, individualization is key and it's, and it is key during this period of time too, so that we're continually to monitor our cross contamination that could potentially take place. And so we're working with our teachers right now. I just had a full meeting with all of our special education teachers and service providers yesterday. They gave us great feedback in terms of how they're seeing their fit into the service models that are out there and available, whether that be the hybrid or the virtual academy model. We're generating great ideas and we've had people at work on, on how to enhance both the virtual learning model and what we can do to improve our services and enrich our services during the course of some of that collective face to face time that many of our students will be able to access and will be wanting to access. The second thing that I'll say about our, our special education service model is, is that our students will be staffed. Every single one of them will be staffed prior to the beginning of services so that we will be determining the type and the model of service that the student will receive. That'll be unique to each student that is served. And that we'll be writing a model, an IEP, which is their individualized education plan that will fit three different models of service. And so it's really, it's really a three, three models in one plan so that we can switch as the dial turns. So that means that overnight we can switch to a distance learning model if we need to, or we can dial it back to a hybrid, or we can go back to a traditional model. The reason that I bring this up is, is that special education 504 plans are very due process heavy types of models of service. And parents need to be included in the decisions that are made about their students. And this is why I'm, I'm asking that you can strongly consider slowing down our timeline for engaging or, or starting the school year up because our teachers need that time just to do the planning necessary to serve our special education students. Our special education teachers do not come in any earlier and they would need additional time to have those 1,100 meetings that we will need to schedule with families. Not only those 1,100 meetings, but then parents may also disagree with the service model that we propose. And then we go through a conciliation process to get to yes. That in, in and all, all by itself is a consideration we need to make when we're saying, how do we do planning at the beginning of the year? How do we prepare for our students' return? But it isn't just that. These meetings are one thing, but then allowing our staff to prepare so that they can actually feel right about the service that they're being able to deliver in that safe and controlled environment is going to be key for our special education staff. But I would also say for all the 504 families, for these other families that are coming in that have concerns about their students and about how they're going to be served, whether it be in the hybrid model or the EBA model, we need additional time. And I, and I really will advocate for that for our special education staff. If we intend to start on August 31st, I will say that I don't see a way for us to begin special education services directly within that first week because we will have to be meeting with parents in order to get those plans in place as the governor has told us we need to before services would begin. So I'm making a strong plea to you as a board to consider starting us a little bit later so that we can provide those services to our students in, in the fashion that we want to provide and with our teachers feeling equipped to provide those services. Because it is again, individualized planning for every single student that we serve. I know a lot of parents out there are very concerned right now that there isn't more detail about the plan of how special education will look. But again, it's a very person centered process in the planning. And we want to assure families that they will be connected with their case managers to go over the specific plan for their students. We also want to say to those parents that are agonizing over the idea of do I pick distance learning or do I pick the hybrid model? And can I switch back if I'm seeing that one or the other is not working or I have concerns about my students' health? As we talked about earlier in the presentation today, we are going to make accommodations, especially from going from the hybrid to a distance learning model. That's an easier switch for us. The switch going from the virtual model to the hybrid is something that will be driven by the IEP team. And what I mean by that, or by the 504 team, either one of those two, and have a, can have a conversation to say, "This is not working." And that we need to have more face to face time in order for the student to be successful academically. So we're going to work with families on that. And so if they're agonizing over that, the teams will be monitoring student progress. If we're not being effective in what it is we're doing with our students, we will change the dynamics so that the student will have better access to the services being provided. The other portion of that is that students that begin in a hybrid model will also be staffed to determine how many days of service they will receive. If they need those, if they're, if they're generally lesser impaired students, say, receiving just speech and language services, they may only, they may only attend in the hybrid model the two days a week that we're talking about for a good percentage of our students. But students that need more will be eligible to receive more up to another two days a week. I've already talked about this model and how we can do that within the elementary school quite easily. At the high school as well, we'd be able to try to find a way to have those students attend, whether that be in additional days in a supported learning environment, or whether that be in a model where they're actually attending class with both groups, AABB. So that students may be attending full four days if they need that as part of their overall accommodations for their disability in order for them to make progress. With that, I'm going to stop because I just said a lot of words. I'll take any questions that you might have, but understand very person centered process.
Thank you, Jeff. My first question is, there is a calendar recommendation here that we move this first day of school to Tuesday, September 8th. And I was wondering, is that date something that you consider enough time for special education? Or are you concerned about that date and would need even more time for the special education team?
So I, I, I think pushing it out to the eighth is definitely giving us a good amount of time to get those IEPs done. It isn't the formal IEP process that everyone is used to going through. It's more or less an amendment to the IEP and that can be something that our case managers will talk through with families. We believe that we need a full week's worth of time to get that done for all of our students and to give parents time to then respond to that and then work through any disagreements that might take place. So that first week when we're back during the teacher in-service week would be the time period that I would have them doing a lot of that work. And then any spillover would follow into the second week during the week of the 31st. That's what we would suggest taking place. In conversations with my staff yesterday, the teachers felt, you know, that this would be the amount of time that they would see as necessary in order to not just get through those IEPs, but then be able to work through the dynamics of getting the schedules put together and having our staffing in place within that next week. More time would definitely be obviously a great asset. And I think that's come from all areas. When we talked with elementary principals, high school principal, middle school, everyone believes that the additional time would be a great asset to plan for these circumstances that we know are going to be tough because our teachers come back not even a week before services start. And a hybrid model is tremendously complex. As I learned yesterday, as I'm talking through with my, with my teachers, they're responding in a way that's, you know, is, is pretty high stress. And, and I, and I put that into context thoughtfully and just in, in terms of the mental health of this and, and saying, you know what? I've been working on this situation all summer long. I've had time to absorb the, the MDH guidelines, the MDE guidelines, all the restrictions, all the considerations. I, that's been my daily bread for the last, you know, two and a half months now. But our teachers oftentimes are just trying to shut off just to recover during the course of the summer. And so when they're coming back and hearing all of this, the first reaction is panic. And you know what? I had that same feeling when we were told that we needed to develop those three models. And so our teachers just need some time to digest. They're going to be doing that, but I also want them to stay fresh in the remaining time that they have left before they come back. So bringing them in earlier isn't necessarily a really great idea at this point either because they need this time to digest what it is we're talking about, to hear what we're, to hear what we're planning, to have that restful thought period and then come back that first week during in-service week and really hit it hard with the development of plans now that they've had a chance to respond to what's going to be taking place.
Erica, maybe I can get Randy out of the clubhouse to talk about the mechanics of the, of that start day after, after Labor Day. So as Jeff indicated, and as all of you can see, the complexity of the hybrid, as we've talked about this over time, it became apparent to me that we do need to ask for that time. Those additional, that additional week still will be filled with obviously professional development. Jeff's got used for contacting parents on their IEPs, some orientation with students, as well as just teachers planning their own lessons and thinking about how to deliver instruction in this hybrid environment or if they are an EBA. So I just have Randy talk a little bit about the mechanics of thinking about this and how we would try to mitigate the loss of instructional time.
Thank you, John. So obviously after listening tonight, we hope that you have a really good grasp of how complicated this really is and what we're entering into. We know it's really important that we have a quality launch moving into this fall. We know that we have a lot of missing pieces right now that we're still working on and We know it's really important that we have a quality launch moving into this fall. We know that we have a lot of missing pieces right now that we're still working on. And we won't have our family registration and our staff data to start putting those final pieces together until next week. And then after that, about a week from Tuesday, our new teachers come back. So one of the things that we know is that we have a high professional development need that sits in front of doing a quality launch here. And as Jeff mentioned, we have IEPs and preparation for delivering quality student support services. So one of our proposals to the board would be that we would actually extract the professional development days out of the school year and front load them. If we were to bring teachers in early, that is a significant cost to the district. Just teachers alone is, you know, a six figure cost. I think it's about $275,000 per day just for the teachers. So really bringing teachers in for days early is not within our financial means. But if we could navigate our calendars such that we could front load days of professional development to help launch these two models going into the fall. I think we have pretty strong consensus across our admin team with our union leadership and the feedback from our calendar committee group back so far has been pretty supportive that front loading the professional development time would be really important to a quality launch. That would get three of the days at a wash. And then the other two days we would ask for would be a reduction in student contact out of the academic calendar year. So some things to think about in terms of that proposal. Last spring, we had this emergency response. And part of what teachers were doing is they were trying to get through the rest of the spring, not knowing if we were really coming back or how long that was going to last, et cetera. But now what teachers are planning for is going to be at least a semester. They're planning out the first semester of the school year. And they're planning for content and protocols and things that they're doing that had already been established last year and last spring. It's one thing to finish a year under COVID. It's a completely different thing to begin a year under COVID when routines and relationships, et cetera, have not been established and maintained. And so part of what we're going to do now is we're going to bring students into an environment where there's a huge number of safety protocols that have to be taught. They have to be taught to our staff. We have to work through all of the what ifs and all of the scenarios of what we're going to do. And so there's this huge professional development need. And we also have, you know, the opportunity to leverage technology differently than we did in the past with some of the synchronous learning opportunities. And we need staff to have some time to work through what that can look like inside of their courses. So what we are proposing is that we front load, move the professional day, three professional days out of the body of the school year and put them in the front. Turn those professional days into student contact days. That creates a little more continuity for those weeks during the school year for students and for families. We would ask that we remove two student contact days that first week. And then the orientation would launch right after Labor Day. That would be the orientation week. That's when we would train students. That's when at the elementary, we would be assessing students. We would be connecting with families, in some cases, doing conferences, getting kids their materials, getting them ready to launch into the hybrid and the EVA the following week. Then by that next Monday, kids have been trained on the protocols. Kids have their materials. They understand how the hybrid's going to work. They understand how we're going to do attendance and assignments and all of those things. They have the resources that they need and we can launch into our hybrid and launch into our virtual academy in a quality way. We really firmly believe to do this well, we need to shift that professional development time upfront. And again, be able to produce the best educational product for our community right from the beginning. So that is our proposal to the board.
Thank you. Jeff, did you have more that you wanted to go into?
So I just had a little bit on the social emotional update. If you want to go into that, from the social emotional side, as I talked about earlier, there is, there's a heavy staff component. And I, and I'll just make one additional add to what Randy just made in terms of the plea for additional time. My background is marriage and family therapist. Taught me one thing is that when you're dealing with high, high levels of stress, the worst thing you can do is say, okay, we've got a plan to go, let's hurry up and get it done. That's, that's one of the worst things you can do for people that are under stress because it makes them, it makes them frantic to get and work hard, but not work very efficiently. And they're not very creative under those circumstances. Just the idea of one additional week can ease the stress level of teachers as they consider the year coming up and will make them just all by itself more creative in how it is they're approaching the task that has been set before them. The more we ratchet them down in terms of time constraints, the less creative they will be and the poorer the outcomes will be for our students. So with that in mind, the professional development side, as Randy is saying that we need to ramp up, there's a large social emotional component to this. As you've heard nationally, as you've heard locally in terms of the survey results and some of the survey results that we've obtained locally as well, has emphasized the need for a strong social emotional continuum. Thankfully, we've got some great partners in the nation in the term, in terms of the Castle Program, as I've talked to you about within the SEL program, a presentation that I made to the board earlier last year. And they have identified some reunification types of models as we reunite students coming back in. We've identified some, some, some critical practices or some priority practices that we're going to work on. Those were all related tonight as, as our principals were talking about their service models and that highly relational approach that we're trying to take with our reestablishment of relationships with students or that initial establishment of relationships with students and families. So that first one, taking time to cultivate and deepen relationships, build partnerships and plan for SEL, that's a really, that's hard focus again, on, on really elevating, getting information from our students and families, listening to what it is they have to say. You as a board have been excellent about that. And we as a, as a school have been trying to get parent voice to inform our actions so that parents feel heard, so that students feel heard as we change our model to meet the needs that families are presenting. The second element was about really helping our adults connect, heal and build their capacity to support students. As you have a group of students coming in that are under stress, if we don't have a practitioner in front of them, and what I mean by practitioners are teachers and our support staff, if those, those individuals aren't settled in and of themselves, they will, they will start to experience vicarious trauma, which is just a matter of, it's that, it's that counter, it's that, it's that effect that comes when I'm dealing with stressful people, I start to get stressed myself. And over time, dealing in that type of situation can result in, in, in mental health concerns that will pop up. But our teachers are very talented and can hold on for a very long period of time without exhibiting a lot of symptoms until they do. And then all of a sudden, we have people that are just not being able to function any longer and may become sick or may become ill and have to take, take those leaves. And so we want to make sure that they have a sufficient, they have sufficient skills themselves. And so that's that self, self-care plan that we want to put together with them and also the connection with the resources that we have available. The next is in that area of create safe and supportive and equitable learning environments. And so this, this curtails so nicely, so nicely with our work in equity because everything we do for SEL is nearly synonymous with our culturally responsive trainings that we do within our district already. And so we're getting a two for one type of a model here. When we focus on SEL or we focus on culturally responsive trainings or teaching practices, we're really addressing both of those two factors at once because they're both so highly relationship based. And so we're not asking teachers to do two things. We're asking them to do one that has double the effect. And so if we get really good at either one or both of these, they are, they are tremendously effective in helping us close that equity gap and making teachers, making students feel welcome, safe in their environment and recognized and celebrated. Finally, this is that use of data. And so we're working with a couple of different data collection agencies out there right now to determine our best model to collect data so that we get not only our baseline to see where we're at at the beginning here of the school year, but then also be able to measure on a regular basis how effective our interventions and our practices that we've tried to change will be in actually changing the student experience within the Dyna Public Schools. So that being said, this is a lot of work to do in, within a very short period of time. But this will be something that we'll do some professional development on right at the beginning of the year. And then we will be continuing this work throughout the year.
Thank you, Jeff. A quick question I had is other than you had mentioned the importance of the time for the teachers, not only to process, but to do their planning for the year as well. Are there other resources that the board and district can provide to help teachers from a social and emotional, mental health and safety perspective?
So once again, I would say that, you know, working with, with Nikki, our new HR director and in trying to put together our continuum of supports and services for our teachers is essential because a lot of our teachers are not aware of the services that are already available to them, like the employee assistance program. There's been an ask that can we, can we expand our employee assistance program benefits to be, go beyond that three free visits to maybe six free visits or 10 free visits? That's something that we would have to talk about through the contractual language that we have with our EAP provider. But we've also approached Frazier Services about the potential for them to provide some additional services in, in the school system, not to serve our teachers directly, but to provide consultation, to provide some additional training about self-care throughout the year and to assist them. That would be an additional add to the program that we don't have the funds and resources for. But I know that we are working with the Edina Ed Fund as well to try to secure some additional dollars for our mental health supports and services, which there is a teacher component in that as well. So if the ask, the ask would really be about, could we find some additional supports in terms of funding in order to support those, that additional time with Frazier? If we can outline a model of service that would assist the teachers feeling supported out on site by offering these consultative groups? Because sometimes teachers just need the assistance to move forward into that next to seek assistance.
Right, thank you. Matt, I'm going to turn it over to you and then get you, Janie.
Yeah, I was going to quickly say, Jeff, thanks for looking into all that. I know that on the finance side, working with John Topen and others, we're seeing what government funding assistance we can apply to these resources. And that still also is fluid right now through what's coming through both the federal and state support levels. But it's great that you're looking into that. So I was going to say, thanks, and it's important to see what other resources, some of these areas around mental health could utilize if funds were available. We've rebalanced this budget like six times in the past eight months. I think we're actually in a pretty good place, especially relative to our needs and our peers, but it's, it's been tricky. So presenting that and going through the Ed Fund, I know there's a series of conversations set up over the next month with the Ed Fund that you're leading. So thanks for that effort too. I mean, that's just great. So and anybody on the webcast is still looking at this, the Ed Fund is open to donations for these purposes and does a lot of good in the community, working with their schools and teachers and kids. So if there's an opportunity there, if you want to do something and you don't know what to do or you don't want to be around people, giving to that fund can really have a direct impact on our schools and kids. So thanks, Jeff, and I'll go back on mute.
Thank you, Matt. Janie?
Yeah, Jeff, I had two questions. The first one is, is there an opportunity to have any virtual interventions on those Wednesdays? Is that something that you would look at for like speech? Any of those services that can be done virtually?
So actually, we, we've been working on that, Janie, because we've been taking a look at online models for speech delivery services. And so that is one of our intents this year is to really ratchet up the amount of direct service time. And so our speech and language providers have actually done some research and study over the course of the summer to say, what do, what do we need to, in order to deliver those, those services virtually and effectively, just like a telepractice model? And so I've already signed the purchase orders on the materials and the equipment that they will need in order to get that done and including some desktop resources that they can utilize virtually. So that's a great assistance. But does Wednesday, is Wednesday a possibility for service? Absolutely, it's more of that supplemental service that we can also provide to our students. We want to schedule into the greatest extent possible and then utilize that Wednesday as that additional supplemental day that we can use to, to really focus in on those students that need just that little bit more.
Okay. And then I have another question too about resource rooms within schools. I know we have quite a few kids that need that space to go to, especially our kids who suffer from maybe some more anxiety issues and just need a place to reset. And what is the thought about having resource rooms this year where we would have kind of that, you know, kids from each different group coming?
So we, so we talked about trying to serve to the greatest extent possible in very limited sized groups. So if we had the opportunity to do a group where we were pulling students out of a single classroom to get a service provided, that would be optimal for a small group size because then those students are all in the same cohort and are in that same pod, which would make the most sense for elementary. However, we're also investigating, as I said earlier in my presentation, the opportunity to reduce the amount of service time that students receive, but then increase the individual attention that they receive. So if you think about it, once again, three students coming in for a 45 minute session can be broken down to one student coming in for 15 minutes and really focusing in on that student's need during that time period. Would still give some additional time, obviously with paraprofessional support and the like, and, and also try to supplement more with the virtual side. But it would, it would allow a change in practice that probably has been a long time in coming because I think part of our, part of our holdup in special education has always been that, you know what, we've tried to serve both economically and effectively. And as a result, we've fallen into a practice where it's been this scheduled daily service, but not highly individualized enough to make the kind of gains that we would really love to see. And so this has really given us an opportunity in the hybrid model and the virtual model to change our modus operandi of standard practice to make those changes with students in an individualized sense. And so we're going to try to utilize that type of a model more moving forward. So we're giving the students the time and the, and the intervention that they need in a very concise manner and then get them back to class as quickly as possible so that they're not missing out on the curriculum that they need to participate in as well.
Thanks, Jeff.
Oh, um, no, I don't really have any questions. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Are there any other questions from board members for Jeff? Oh, sorry, Julie.
No, that's okay. I have two things. One is, so you mentioned 1,100 IEPs, right? And the amount of clerical and paperwork and brain power that goes behind that. Is there anything similar to what Erica asked about support to help bring in volunteers? Bring in any kind of extra hands to, to help with that work? I know it's going to be intense when it rolls out and I know there's a lot of privacy and data issues. But if, if there is something that you identify that we could do a call for volunteers, I know a lot of people have been, you know, want to help support to make this school year and all our students successful as possible. So I just would encourage you to raise your hand if you do identify something that we could do a call, a call out. So.
Well, I really appreciate that offer. I think one of the difficulties we run into there is that again, IEP meetings are highly private. And so having additional people assist, maybe with the scheduling practice could potentially assist us and just getting some of those things done. But it is giving us that extra week, giving us that opportunity to do that outreach is, is, is the first big ask. And if I think of anything else that we could potentially offer or ask some volunteer support for, we will definitely be giving that ask out.
Okay, excellent. And then the second thing is actually to just address the week, the extra week and pushing the start of the year. And I just think it's super smart planning. I really like hearing how much it supports not only our students and to, to help set them up for more success, but to support our teachers in preparing for the year. So, and I think it was just really smart to pull the other professional development days, front load them. So actually more instructional time for students and interaction and not so much disruption once we get this model going because it's, it's riding a unicorn to get to this model, right? And so I just wanted to say, I thought that was very well laid out and a really smart idea. So.
Well, the other thing that I wanted to emphasize is that I bring up by 1,100 IEP students or special education students, but we have a close to another 500 students that are in 504 plans that also need to be considered individually. And again, we have students that we know are on our watch list, those students that are considered at risk that may be an intervention, that aren't in the 504 plan, that are not special ed, that we really do need to consider individually as we try to determine their schedule. We have a large number of students that access our interventions in the areas of reading and mathematics and also students that are accessing for behavioral or mental health supports that are on no plans whatsoever and are not identified through a 504 plan, but receive those additional services. So giving this extra time really helps us plan thoughtfully for them. That it's that 80% that we're largely prepared for through just general consideration of hybrid and EVA. But that other 20% is really in need of individualized consideration. Not that we don't try to do that for all students, but these students are students that we know need additional supports.
Yeah, got it. Great. That's it. Thank.
Thank you, Jeff. I know you're doing a yeoman's work. I know you're doing a yeoman's workfare, so I want to hear your work.
Do you think, no, thank you.
Thank you. John, where were we going to go next in the?
So, here's what I propose, Erica. I think on Monday, we can have Mary present a little bit more communication, we'll know a little bit more, and we could do that on Monday at the work session, at the board meeting. I think our next steps, if it's okay, just go walk through that, Erica?
Yes.
So, on the Monday board meeting, I would place on the, on action would be to approval of the September 8th school start, because we would need to know that so we can plan going into the school year, so I can get the leadership to plan those weeks out. So, it'd be good to have that on. I'll add that to action. And then, I think on August 10th, during the work session or leadership update, we can give some more updates on where we're at with the model and the data we're getting from both students and from staff. I can give the board a quick update if there's anything new, and I, trust me, there will be something new. And then, I think I would ask your permission for approval of this on August 17th at a special meeting of the board, if that makes sense. I think that's what we talked about, Erica, isn't it?
Yes.
So, that way, on August 17th, we kind of, leading to what Lenny was talking about, if there's things we learn after we begin to staff this, what are some tweaks to the model, what are some changes to the model, we can bring that on the 17th.
Good. So, for the board's perspective, our work session, and for the community as well, so you understand, our work session on the 10th is focused on prioritizing initiatives in the district and coming up with goals for the district and superintendent and the board itself. So, I want the community to understand if they come to listen to the work session, this is not going to be the focus of the work session, but I also want the board to understand that if we want to engage in discussions about the moving of the date for the start of school, that we should do it now, because this is the opportunity, we're going to have to talk about it before voting on it. And then, in addition to that, any discussions that we want to have about, before voting on the final approval of the model, because there isn't a work session unless we have a special work session, which we can, but I just want, from a process perspective, I want you guys to understand, this is really the time we have to talk about those two issues, and I'm happy to entertain having another work session or a work session before or special session to vote on it, but I just wanted to walk through that process for you guys.
Thanks, Erica.
No problem. And then, I know, John, you said that from a communications perspective, that Mary would be doing an update Monday.
Monday, right.
And so, but I did want the community to know that we have started a Q and A page that you can go to right now, that has answers, a lot of answers to questions that were given to the board and that were, that, things that people went over tonight, and we will keep updating that page with, when we have answers to new questions, we will keep updating the page. But I also want the community to understand that we are sort of walking a fine tightrope between trying to get information out as quickly as possible with also not rushing administrative decisions, because this is such important work. It's about the health and safety of the students and the teachers in the district and understanding the curriculum, and I, hopefully, you got an overview of how complicated it is, that there are a lot of questions we simply don't know the answers to yet. And so, but as soon as we know answers, and we know we've done a thorough job vetting it out, we're adding it to the Q and A page, and we will continue to, as you, as a community have sent questions into us, hopefully, you've seen that we have, we're collecting every single question that anyone sends to us. We have about a six-page document right now, and through presentations and through the Q and A, we're trying to answer as many questions as we possibly can to the community, and I just wanted to note that for community members. Julie, I see that you are.
No, I just wanted to add, I know that the communication update will come Monday, but I know that, you know, the deadline for signup is on Sunday for, we're asking families to make a decision, and I guess my, I just wanted to see if we have like an outreach plan for any families that we haven't heard from and connecting to make sure that we, like, are we going to be calling? I think I got a robo-call from, one of my calls that came in was actually from the Edina Schools. So, I know that there's effort, but I want to make sure that, like, especially with, I know our cultural liaisons, to reach out to any families that, I just want to make sure that that's happening and what that looks like.
Mary, briefly, would you just step in and talk about our plans?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mary.
So, you did, Julie, you did get a robo-call. As we were working tonight, Steve sent out a blast to remind everybody to look for that email in case they missed it, and reminding them of the deadline on Sunday night. And then, there is a team of folks in the multilingual area working with the cultural liaisons to have a virtual meeting with them to make sure that they understand the process and are getting the information they need, so that they can also make their model, learning model choices by Sunday night. So, both of those things are happening. And then, I also wanted to mention, too, that the FAQ page that Erica mentioned is on the family dashboard. So, we just added that today, and the dashboard is looking very robust right now. It's got six buttons on it, so there's lots of information out there and a lot of questions that we added today and a few more that will come hopefully tomorrow.
Great. Thank you so much, Mary.
That phone call, what we do is we find out who hasn't submitted, and so, we're not, we're not sending it to people that have already completed the My Info Update. It's only for those that have not submitted. I did a message with a phone call and then abbreviated message that Mary sent out yesterday, and I plan on doing that for the next two days, and those are translated in Spanish and Somali for our families, for Spanish and Somali as well. So, the phone message is just my lovely voice, but the email is translated.
And are we, are we offering tech support for families to make option if they need it to? Is that part of the virtual meeting that is set up to help make sure? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I've reached out to the cultural liaisons if they need help with that, and then on our instructions, we've got a link to email where they help, but that, that just gets us in a queue, and then our team in the enrollment office is addressing issues through phone calls and through help and being able to remote in and things like that. So, yeah, we are making sure that this is not a barrier for a student to make, or a parent to make a choice. It's really important, not only for the instructional place, but just getting the data up to date in the systems for this year, and so, it's really important for us to make sure we touch all families in this process.
Great. Thank you, guys, so much. Sorry that I derailed and asked the question, but.
No. How about Ellen and Matt have comments? So, Ellen, why don't you go ahead?
I was just going to say quickly, that's been great. I got three reminders in the last six hours and did it during our five-minute break, so I hadn't done it yet, so it was really helpful. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Mary, for putting up the Q and A page. I think it's really important for people to have as much information as possible in order to make an informed decision. And so, I just was, I'm hoping that the district is also putting up answers to some of the questions that we have received as board members. We've been getting emails from a lot of people, and I'm wondering if those questions are being incorporated into that question and answer page.
They are, Ellen. They were all added.
Yep.
Super, thank you. And a lot of those had to do, we didn't talk about transportation tonight. A lot of those questions also had, you know, some of them actually had to do with transportation and what type of social distancing is going to be handled, and how that is going to be handled, and whether or not there's going to be any attempt to have, you know, windows open or, and what this district, how the district thinks about that.
So, I think we'll handle that on the 17th, because we don't know how many buses, how many kids, how many kids, how many buses, how many routes, until we know how students fall into the virtual, the EVA, or into the hybrid model.
So, we don't, so, we don't know we'll have, we'll maintain six feet on a bus?
Well, yeah, the social distancing, but we have to do that by executive order, so we will do that on the bus.
Thank you.
Matt? Did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. So, John, did you have anything else that you had wanted to present or review to the board and community?
No, we're in a good place. Thank you for a long night, but you got a chance to see how all systems in the Edina Public Schools are being changed because of COVID. It's an amazing.
Does the board have any, yeah, it really is.
It's an amazing system.
Do the board, any board members have follow-up questions or comments? Owen?
I think I have one short follow-up question. It just feels incredibly academic here at 10 o'clock after a five-hour meeting, but I know some members of the community are interested, and I am, too. What happens if our numbers shift significantly in Hennepin County and/or Minneapolis? What, Hennepin County is hovering right around 20 per 10,000, and I think, John, you said we actually, the past week, went up to 23. I think in Edina, did I hear you say that we're at 15? What happens if our numbers went down theoretically in January? Could we go to a four, five-day-a-week training, or school? Are we locking in here for the rest of the school year with this? Just thoughts on that.
Yeah, so, in the Safe Learning Plan for the 2020, 21 school year that the governor put out, they give ranges of the number of cases per 10,000. So, when we started this planning, we were at 20.93, which the Department of Health said both elementary and secondary have to be hybrid. If we were to drop into the range between 10 to less than 20, then we could move to elementary in-person, and our middle and high school would stay hybrid, and we would need to come up with plans on making that shift. And then, I think those plans have to be approved by the MDE. And then, zero to less than 10, we can do in-person learning for all students, so that they're tying it to the number of cases per 10,000. So, when we started this planning, and this is a starting plate, and we could go either way, if the number of cases drop, we can go to more in-person learning. If ours go up, then, of course, we would move towards more distance learning. So, this is a starting place. We started at 20.93 was the numbers we started at, that was reported last Thursday at the governor's conference. Today, it comes out every Thursday. Today, we're at 23.24, so we increased by three points, three cases per 10,000 in Hennepin County.
And John, just to set an expectation, no one's trigger happy. If it drops to 19.8 for three days, we're not switching models and goes back to 20.2, we're not flipping back again.
No, 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 no.
An immediate trigger. It's a barometer with a reasonable number that's being monitored on a weekly basis and connects with Minnesota Department of Health, so nothing's in stone. There's four companies entering phase three right now in the U.S. alone on the vaccine. That could be out by January, so everything's being tracked on a weekly basis, and nobody should consider September 8th being the plan for June 8th.
Right. If the, if we do shift, the district shifts, in the Safe Learning Plan, I think we have, we have two weeks to make that shift, but I think we'll get, I know we'll get guidance from the MDH and the MDE on this.
Does that answer your question, Owen? So, there's no, there's no, we're not set in this plan until January. It's not like a semester long.
Yes, and I don't think anybody is seriously talking about shifting this on a dime, but if just general patterns emerge, that after four months, it's very clear that we've gone up to 30 or we've gone down to 10, that then we can, we can shift. The follow-up question I'd have is, are we, we're gathering our figures, of course, from Hennepin County as a whole, is there any way we can interpret, and would we want to interpret the figures for Edina alone for our district? Any thoughts about that, John?
So, the MDE gave us guidance that we're to follow the, follow the data in the county that we're, where we reside.
Okay.
And just from my personal opinion, Owen, I think that we have students that come from lots of other areas, not just Edina, as well as teachers. And so, to me, it makes a lot more sense from a health and safety perspective to take the Hennepin County data into perspective, not just the city of Edina, because the reality is our schools are not limited to just residents of Edina.
That's a good point. Okay, that's all I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
So, I just want to make a quick note that while we're telling families that whatever they select is what they have for the semester, and we talked tonight about how you could go from hybrid to virtual more easily than another, I think that we might want to look at a policy that says you can go from virtual to hybrid if there is space, and it would have to be on a first-come, first-served basis, but to just have a strict thing, even if we could accommodate, doesn't, I'm not sure that would be the right approach. Just a thought.
Yeah, thanks, Lenny. That's a good point. We've talked about that, too.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, this is new for all of us, right? Like, there is no manual, there is no guidebook to say that we're doing everything right. But I have to say that not only as a board member, but also as a parent, listening to this tonight, I feel as if, I know no one can make guarantees about the safety of my kids, but I feel very confident as a board member, as a parent, and a community member, that their safety has been at the top priority, along with the desire for them to continue their learning. And so, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to let that be known to John, to you, and to your entire staff and all of our teachers, because I'm pretty overwhelmed by the amount of work that you guys have put into it, and I feel really proud of our district right now.
It's an amazing team of people. Thank you, Janie.
Erica, you're on mute.
Erica, you're muted.
Now, I'm not. John, did you have any leadership updates before we finish up the meeting? No? Okay. So, I was just going to wrap up the meeting and wrap it up with how I started the meeting with, I just, I really want to acknowledge our. What?
Your son's birthday? That's how you started the meeting?
Not acknowledging my son. I want to acknowledge our district leadership team, our teachers, our educators, everyone that's going into making this work for our families, as well as acknowledge and recognize that it is a very stressful time for the same individuals, our families, our students. But like Janie said, sitting here tonight and listening to the expertise that we have, there will obviously be issues that arise that we don't even know about, but I am confident that. that we do have the team in place to put together a safe.